Come to order, please. Welcome everyone to the August 2nd regular city council meeting of the city of Ballard Beach. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. Madam Clerk, please call her all.
Councilmember Frank Banker.
Here.
Councilmember Lynn Dunn.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Notera. Councilmember Rita Swob. Vice Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
Mayor Joseph Manzo.
Here.
City Manager Lynn Reeves.
Here.
City Attorney Fred Riley.
Here.
And Councilmember Robyn Aki was unable to attend.
Okay, thank you. First item of business is approval of the agenda. Motion, please?
Sure move.
Motion by Addis Second.
Second.
Great as well. Any discussion? Any comments from the city? Back to council. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes six zero. Agenda is approved. Next comes to citizen comments. We have a three-minute presentation by any citizen that would like to address us. Procedure for this is as follows. One second. You come up to the podium here, please keep your name and residency. I will tell you that there should be out there and on that presentation table a rule of conduct. That is the rules that we operate by. You speak respectfully to the council and we will speak respectfully with you. That's the basic gist of twelve rules there. You have three minutes of time unless someone gives you extra time. You cannot speak on any item that's on the agenda during this portion. If there's something you wish to speak of that's on the agenda, I will call for citizen comments at that time and you can come up and speak at that point, okay? So if it's on the agenda, you'll talk later about it. If it's not on the agenda, now is the time to speak to the council. Finally, the last thing is don't expect council to get in a discussion with you. We're not permitted under the rules to speak back and forth with you. So the most we're gonna say to you is thank you. I do have the option of referring something of concern to the city manager, to the city attorney. With that said, would someone, anyone like to speak with council? Yes, sir. Yeah, speak right to the mic about two inches away, you'll be fine.
Joshua Hollis, 10th Street. I'm gonna be talking about the federal lawsuits if anyone wants to accuse themselves of it.
Okay.
About a year ago, a council member Rita Swob put forth a motion to remove Juve's boy from the partisan airport. It didn't have anything to do with her job performance. It was in part due to what she said at the Ballard Shores council meeting. Twice this council was warned by the mayor that this was a violation of her first amendment rights. The city attorney also warned not to remove her. Three of the council members who voted to pass this motion are still active, which is Lynn Dunn, Rita Swob, Dave Gaddis. They ignored this legal advice due to them proving that they're not capable of putting the city's best interests ahead of their own personal interests and personal vendettas. Even to the extent of giving the city involved in a six-year lawsuit, I call that they did the right thing and they stand down and resign from their position and not causing more liability to the city.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Yes?
Good evening. My name is Jolie Roderro and I live on 113 12th Street. I also have, in case I run over, three minutes from my husband Pete and from Linda Welch.
Would you hang on one second, please, on that? Can I shake just the hands, please? Is that correct? You're giving your three minutes?
That's correct.
And yes, Ms. Welch? Yes? Patty, nine minutes for Ms. Roderro. Ms. Roderro, you have the floor.
I begin with agreeing to support Judge Hollis's statement that due to this, some members of this council's misbehavior, the city is now facing a large federal discrimination suit and of which most likely the Ballard Beach real has to pay for their defense. I would ask that they all resign as well. What I'm really going to talk about is a sign that's being planned for outside and I'm assuming that, perhaps maybe I'm assuming incorrectly, that you've already had permitting requests done or any kind of studies done because if it hasn't occurred yet, you will need them. Not only the permitting, but you will need environmental studies and you will need traffic impact studies. Because we've contacted the DOT and those are going to be mandatory. I would like it that if you have any studies you could reference to that sign, that I can have a copy of it. Ballard Beach belongs to the Florida Coastal Island Sanctuary Program that works to protect threatened and endangered coastal birds. Two particular birds, a little blue heron and a tricolor heron. They nest right out there on Bird Island, right outside of our city hall. And they're threatened and endangered. It is part of this floral coastal program to protect these endangered birds. The retention pond across the street is also home to local endangered and migratory birds. And it's also our responsibility to protect them. We're constantly being told to shut off bright lights to save the sea turtles. Yet bright lights affect all wildlife. They affect their flying habits, their breeding habits. Ballard Beach City Hall is already lit up like the Taj Mahal every single night. And now people have a colored blinking or rotating bright electric sign in front. What is the impact of the sign on traffic slowing, stopping to read the sign? We already have that on up and down the causeway. What is the impact on the homeowners that face the causeway? What is, most importantly, our coastal and endangered birds? How is that damage measured? And what is Ballard Beach City going to do about that? I'd like to know if, in the course of the evening, if you have charged a committee to study these topics and the environmental impact on the sign and when they meet so that I can follow up on that. I think the true measure of the sign is a potential revenue that the city could see by renting out space on its advertising sign. And I would request, again, I would request copies of all the studies. Since I don't know how the city is going to conduct this business, I would like to make some suggestions in the event that it continues to go on and go through the sign. Want the sign be turned off at night, every night, like the closing of the beach gates? That the colors, the brightness, the solid versus blinking of the sign be selected to cause the least harm to the birds? What is the increased cost of operating this sign? Is this in the budget? Has it been accounted for? How about the longevity of the sign? Usually it's about eight years. And how will it be disposed? Adding to landfill? And again, I already asked if there's a sign committee charged with the completion of these studies? And if so, I'd like to know the members and when they meet. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you step away, you made several requests our notice to be considered public records requests.
Highly, yes, if they exist.
Okay, then, one second. So I know, I'm sure Patty wasn't taking notes of this, but she can review the tape or the video at a later point.
I can send her an email.
That's fine. I appreciate that. Thank you for your comments. Yeah, we're not supposed to interact. Don't interact here, okay?
I'd like to respond, anyway.
We'll need permission. We're not supposed to interact with the residents, okay? So if you're going to dispense with the rules, then we should have done that in the beginning. But if you want to make a motion, dispense with the rules, we'll dispense with the rules.
Yes, I'd like to, a motion that I respond to at the last citizen's comment, what we normally do at the other previous meeting. It's near to be tightening up the rules just for this one occasion. And I'd like to just kind of relax so I can make a comment and address it.
I'll second that. I'll second that. Debate? I'll debate it. We don't tighten up or loosen the rules at all for one person. The rules are the rules. The ordinance says you don't interact with residents. So if you want, and we have at times had an interaction with residents. So if that's what the council votes for, then we'll have the interaction with the residents. It's not my job to make the words on the fly.
And I respectfully request the call to questions.
You know, if you wanted to be mayor, you should have ran for it. I won. I won. I'm the mayor. You don't know your procedure. What happens after you get done talking? What's the next thought? Does anybody know? I think debate. Debate. And then after debate, what happens? Anybody? Just jump right in. Citizen comments? Citizen comments! Correctamundo! And if I don't let the citizens speak, what am I violating? The open public meeting rules! So we haven't called the question yet, but thank you.
Let me just bear the commentary and move on.
Well, we didn't want to call the question. You've tried that before. It didn't work in the past. It's not gonna work with me ever.
I accept your friendly remark.
No problem. Any other council comments?
Well, yes, I'd like to make a comment. It seems that we just randomly ban the rules whenever we feel like it. I think basically you pick your favorites and those are the ones that we comment back and forth with. Everybody else that you don't agree with, they're ignored and chastised. So I think if Mr. Gunn would like to respond, I'm all in for it.
And the personal attack rule, like you just did, saying I pick and choose favorites, would that be like you? When you pick and choose your motion favorite? Right back at you, my friend, okay? I don't pick favorites, but the rule says, you don't act like a child. Did I get that from you, friend? The rule says we don't have interaction. Every time we've had an interaction, the council voted to have that interaction. Unless you change the ordinance, which you don't have time to do because you're sticking your nose in my lawsuit, you wind up having the rule we have. With that said, any further council comments?
Everyone heard that. Here's a lawsuit.
Oh, yeah, it took you a city council resolution to figure it out. My lawsuit, Manzo v. Ballard Shore, David Michael Gaddis.
I would just like to, if we're suspended rules, we suspend the law.
We will. For this, for this, this second case.
And I understand the rules and that and I pity these poor people that sit here till eleven o'clock at night that want to go home and they make noise. I'd love to add your thoughts and wishes and desires. Really people that run the city, you know, you're taxable. So I understand and I support.
Okay, thank you. Any citizen comments? The child is welcome to comment. No?
I list the picture topic?
Just on this motion to open it up for back and forth. Okay, back to council?
I have one more, which is I know that everyone feels like I'm trying to spifle. But the truth is, is that our mayor, which I'm not allowed to address, actually moves citizen comments to the end of the night. I'm the one who got them back for you. If it wasn't for me, you'd all be here at eleven o'clock. So I hope you remember that.
Yes, and that stroke of brilliance by David, who was a council member at the time. The reason why I'm moving to the end of the night, Mr. Gunn, if you're gonna keep playing with your fingers, go outside and play with yourself and come back when you're done. Okay, Mr. Gaddis, it was at the end of the night so that we would have an interaction which would have been into our immediate point thereafter. You moved it to the beginning and our part doesn't come until, oh, item seventeen. We're on item two. So we're the ones who got penalized by your brilliance. I'll call the question. All in favor of having a dialogue back and forth with each person who comes up on citizen comments this evening? Aye? Aye. Opposed? Mr. Gunn, you may address Ms. Roderro. You are up here right now and you have plenty of time left. So Mr. Gunn will now just address your comments.
Thank you. I just want to address some of the issues you raised about the digital sign because I think there's a concern that the city is just leaking into this thing blindly and we're gonna put a digital or electronic sign out there, okay? So the city manager and his staff is diligently working on some implementation and ordinance guidelines for further down the road when other people may come forward and say, hey, I want a digital sign. So with respect to the background, the city of Ballard Beach has begun the acquisition process to replace an old monument sign, okay? The new sign will incorporate electronic panels that provide an efficient and effective means of displaying timely public notifications. The displays are highly customizable with respect to color, font size, brightness, screen transition and animation, and the message dwell time, which is how long the message stays on the screen, okay? In order to balance the public service provided by an electronic display with traffic safety as well as the residential community ambiance or flavor of Ballard Beach, the following guidelines are being distilled and looked at, okay? Because we've done some research and there are gold standards for how progressive communities implement electronic signs, okay? It's not new technology and there's a lot of guidelines out there of how people have done it successfully as well as how people have done it improperly. Just have created new problems, okay? So with those thoughts in mind, further down the road, I anticipate that the city will be talking and working with our planning and zoning committee for future requests for digital signs and considerations dealing with some of these electronic signs within the city of Ballard Beach. The areas of emphasis with respect to electronic signs includes some of the following. I know in the future, there was a concern about, oh, well, anybody can just put a digital sign now wherever they want. Well, the gold standard is you tie the placement of digital signs basically to the volume of traffic on roadways. So if you, if you put some constraints around the volume of traffic on roadways, obviously you don't have the traffic volume on a residential street. So that might prohibit you from placing an electronic sign advertising that your house is for sale or you have a garage sale this weekend, something along those lines, okay? There is also some considerations for whether the electronic sign is placed on the person's premise or the business premise or off the premise. So again, these are a lot of things that we're looking at and trying to understand and be smart about with the implementation of this thing. There are guidelines for the setback, how far back from the street you have to place this sign. And there are also traffic safety impacts, okay? There are concerns about the hours of operation. And one of the factors, like you said, is there are energy consumption costs to this thing. Typically, those are a little more expensive than a residential home. It can be up to thirty times depending on how bright it is or how many hours of operation you have. And so we're being respectful, trying to understand that and understand that this thing may not need to be on twenty-four hours a day, okay? There are also concerns about brightness. In daylight, the gold standard is less than five thousand nips, which is a unit of brightness for these signs. If you drive around and look at some of the signs that are out there on commercial properties, they are very offensive. And never at any time was the goal or the anticipated need meant to be a bright fireworks display sign, okay? And other times, other than daytime, the gold standard is less than two hundred and fifty nips. So you can see that it changes greatly from day to night. And of course, there's an auto-adjust function that's basically tied to ambient lighting. So on a cloudy day, it certainly may not be as bright as if the sign is out full and bright. The size will be a function of zoning adjacent structures and that's tied to the planning and zoning and any possible groundwork that we lay for future zoning restrictions on this thing. There are concerns and gold standards about minimal message duration, which is this dwell time we're talking about. How long should that message be on display on the screen? The issue there is if you have too short a dwell time, like three to five seconds, you're creating a distraction to drivers. So what you do is you set a minimum dwell time of like eleven seconds, which is the standard for a thirty-five mile per hour roadway and a view, when you come into view at five hundred feet. So I mean, this stuff isn't just made up. There are scanners forcing this stuff and we're looking very seriously at this stuff. You're not just going to jump into this thing blindly. And of course, the last thing is maximum transition time. You don't want the thing too slow or otherwise people will be looking at the sign waiting for it to change over. And you don't want to have sequential messages. You don't want to have screen A tied to screen B because then that's a distraction as well. So if you limit sequential messages and you maximize the amount of time that the screen changes display, okay? So I think what I'm just trying to say here is that we we're doing some globalizing. And we're putting some critical thought to this thing. We're not just shotgunting the approach of this thing. The display has to have a default setting so if there is a problem with the display or a power outage or some problem with the display, it shuts off, basically. So you don't have a funny message on the sign, a blanking, flashing and distracting drivers. No interactive displays with pedestrians or cars. Some of these other municipalities are getting so advanced with this stuff, as your car drives by, the digital sign interacts with your telephone or your car. Say, hey, hey, why don't you stop in and we'll give you a free stay at the hotel if you come in and register. Any questions on any of those?
Thank you. Mr. Gunn, but I beg to differ. You didn't address any of my comments, which were particularly about environmental study. Now speaking about environmental studies being done to impact birds or the traffic study, you haven't done, from what I've heard from you, any kind of official study. You're just following guidelines that are published out there, which is great. But I don't trust the council since the idea of this sign to begin with was in opposition of all the residents that responded to your survey twice that they didn't want this sign. Yet you went ahead, shotgunning, as you said, the sign ahead. So since it's coming, whether we like it or not, and it's being rammed down our throats, I want to make sure that you do follow all the guidelines, that there is an environmental study. Not just you reading your guidelines, just you designing what so-and-so is doing down the street, but that the governmental agencies say this will not damage these birds, these will not damage, will not impact our traffic. We know the traffic here is horrific on the weekends and on the we don't want any more distractions. So all you told me was how the sign works. And frankly, I don't care how the sign works because I don't want the sign, period. I think it is a press distraction to their city. We don't need that sign. I think I heard a gentleman in your last council meeting and I think he's the gentleman that, maybe the company that's going to do the sign from the way he was speaking. And I think the primary reason is the revenues that advertising on that sign are going to be able to bring. Well, at least it will offset the high cost of running the sign. So I thank you for your comments. I don't like your comments on the council. I think you all sound like high schoolers or middle schoolers who pick me back and forth. Protocol is protocol. And you need to follow the rules. That's how we are all civil. I follow the rules. I don't speak longer than I have to, right? Thank you.
Thanks, Roderro. I'm honest with this. Ms. Roderro, hang on. Ms. Roderro? Ms. Roderro?
Yes?
I wanted to address your comments. I have a right to speak here too. At least on this issue. You said exactly what I was thinking. I don't care how many pixels, nips and whatever the hell the sign runs with. I care about what you just brought up, which I was unaware of, environmental studies and traffic studies that I have not heard one word about in any of the planning of this. And why would that be any different? I'm gonna show later on this letter that I demanded from the Florida DEP. You might remember that our beautiful COs were clear cut to the ground in November by our city manager and he didn't know any better. Despite the fact that there was a sign on more than twenty foot away from the Sixth Street dunes. That sign's been removed. I still have a picture of it. We like to say we didn't know any better. No one told us that was wrong. I didn't know I couldn't run that red light. Well, DEP does have rules. And if you're aware of them, and I'm gonna refer this to our city attorney and to our city manager for follow-up. We have a citizen that has said that there's rules. I'm aware of no studies that have been done whatsoever. So I'd like to know if there have been studies and if they've
Well, I
if there's studies, if they've been done and what the results of those studies are so that we don't get any more DEP letters telling us we broke more rules and more laws. That also goes for the Department of Traffic and if there's a highway study that needs to be done. I believe that's the county, a county road out there, so I guess it's the county. I don't know. You've done more research. City manager?
Well, we haven't done any studies and I think she's erring on the wrong side personally. And there's a lot of things you do studies for. There was a sign out there that put out more lumens than this thing does. And now you're telling me that this sign's bad for the birds yet we had a sign out there that put out more light than the, than this sign. So I will look into it, just to clarify. And I'll get you, get you an answer and I'll get the council answer.
Now, we've written up the studies and the conversations with DOT. Now we'll send it to you so that you
That's fine.
Where we spoke to.
I don't think DOT has anything to do with this.
Traffic, yes, they do.
I have, I have one comment also. I have seen online and heard from neighbors that we intend on advertising on this sign. I know everyone on the council and we've met and we have not one time discussed ever advertising. Just because the salesman brings up that you can do it with this sign does not mean we're going to do it. He could very well say we can throw it in the water. We're not gonna do it. So I appreciate your honesty. And if you're gonna post things online, you might as well clarify and say, this is my opinion that they're going to advertise. Instead, they're probably going to advertise.
They, that is my opinion and I can post it any way I like. And in your council meeting last month, the salesman or the gentleman actually said it because there was, how would I say, reluctance, a little reluctance from the council. And he says, oh, and by the way, you can do this and get revenue. Now, based on the way this council has performed, I don't put anything past it. So if there's a way to make money on that sign, I'm sure you will find it and will vote for it down the road.
Will you vote? Vote? Just
Sorry, I'm gonna get off the bus.
I appreciate you bringing up the wildlife issues and everything like that. And I'm all for wildlife, but just go right down the street here, 19th Street. For years, it's been sea ducks that harbor on that beach, okay? Once was a protected beach that no boats were coming, were having to come in out of sleep. Now you have the ski-doo, sea-doo, whatever you want, motorized criss. I think they did the bowling pins. Some of these kids try to hit them.
That's right.
You have the electric bikes that cleared a path. They almost hit me. I mean, I'm a bigger target, of course, but and you know what? I contacted the FWC. And I don't want to show what figure, figure, a finger they gave me here, a more or less date. And I got a reply back tonight about the buoys, okay? And I've been asking for a meeting with the mayor of Ballard Shores and everything like that. So the attorney from the FWC contacted me tonight at 5:30 or 5:15, whatever, and said, you can file for a variance, but you have to be under this statute. Please click the link. Click the link. It says statute not available. Government, government at its best, I gotta say.
Yes.
You can make some valid concerns.
No, and I think it's just a matter of continuing to push because I agree with you with reference to the beach in the sense of the buoys are missing and the boats coming for those dwells.
And the mayor brings up that DEP letter and I responded to everyone on that letter this week and crickets came back. They're more concerned about ammonia, I call it ammonia mishap. That people, skin cancer on the beach, ducks being killed, manatees no longer being protected in that certain area that used to always swim in May, okay? Migrating up, migrating down. That's okay.
It's just about being vocal and non-stop.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Folks, I want to just give you, sorry, give you, in one second. If somebody says something you agree with or you don't agree with, our rules call that the audience has to stay quiet. So I, you know, I hear applause, but you know, we don't want to have applause and booing and stuff like that. The rule is we're supposed to just basically sit there as the audience. So please, let's follow that one. Sir?
Okay, my name is Fuat Korkiti and I live on Bay Shore 27th, right way around Morgan. I just, I'm out here just to support the lady that was here earlier and I'm a hundred and ten percent with her as far as the, having a street life. And I don't know you all by name, but the gentleman over here will give us a wonderful description of what this sign, of all the statistics of what this sign is about. But yet you use the terminology destruction, destructive. Keeping it away from being destructive many, many times that only tells me that this sign will be destructive. You're basically trying to find how to make that less destructive. It's, to me, clear understanding that sign will be destructive for the drivers. So, and I'm also supporting your program on environmental science. So that's my opinion. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other citizens like to add? Mr. Hansik? John Hanzig, 22nd Street.
I have thought seriously about whether or not to come up here tonight because I didn't know if I could retain myself. I'm really livid with what's going on. The lawsuit. The sign. I don't think that we've done right. And I'm not gonna use council members' names in general directly with someone at the last council meeting or the one before because I was out of town for the special meeting and the work session. But I liked the way I wanted. Just cost taxpayers $5,000 more because that was personal. That wasn't in the best interest of the city. And yet, two surveys were conducted. Seventy percent of the people said they didn't want it. You didn't listen to we, the people. That's who you represent. That's who you serve. The second item that really upset me. I didn't make that last meeting because I was preparing to go on vacation. I find out somebody on the council decided they wanted to look into a new city attorney or, for whatever reason, review the contract. I don't know what was said, how it was said, tone of whatever. I intend to listen to the voice of the tape of that meeting. I'm shocked. I have great deal of respect for Mr. Riley. I have said so on multiple occasions. He's given this council wise counsel and tried to keep y'all out of trouble. And now he has given his notice. And yet, you've been served with a federal lawsuit. I don't know a lawyer who would wanna touch it with a 20-foot pole. And in conclusion, I concur with the other residents who have also said the same thing. Those of you named in that suit, you need to step down.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hansik.
I did not mention anybody by name.
I said, "Thank you." My first layer... Frank Baggar wants to comment.
Look, the sign, there was a long debate about it. It got passed. I made comments, and I was getting responses four to one against it. I agree with you. I believe the residents did not want it. I would like to knock on everybody's door in this township, women, candidates, campaign, and say, "Give me 40 bucks for the sign." Because that's what it would cost, right? I don't think anyone would show. Well, I shouldn't say anyone. Majority of the residents would never show that much. And for clarification, I was not at the last meeting. There was a vote taken, but I expressed wholeheartedly, and I could not hear a word. And there was no way, Mr. Riley, that I was voting to have you replaced. I thought it was for utter litigation that was coming forward, that they were seeking to entertain. I think you've done a marvelous job. I got your bills right here for the last three months. There's not one fine item on here. That's not reasonable. Not... And anybody who works for a living wouldn't pay, all right? I think Mr. Riley does a marvelous job for us. He tells me everything I don't wanna hear, but that's his job, all right? All right? And then you go forward. And we got a resignation letter from you today, or a couple weeks ago. I hope you do not resign from us, especially in a budget deficit. That's all.
Mr. Hansik, I'm gonna respond with you.
Yes, sir.
To your three points, okay? First off, with regards to the sign, it's been voted on, unfortunately. There are some issues, and there might be a possibility if there's some technical issue, we can stop. But it's gonna go forward, okay? And I didn't vote for it, and Fred Baggar didn't vote for it, and Robin Aki didn't vote for it. Can I just remember?
I don't know who did.
And that's okay. We can use names. This is a vote. You own your vote. I've said that before. You own it if you make it. That's the first thing. I was gonna wait till later on, but since you brought the topic up with Fred Riley, that was at the work session last time. That's why you missed it. It wasn't at the regular council meeting. And it's available on tape. You could hear it. Person who made that was the same person who was, after 22 years of Paul Marino said we were moving too fast to put his contract out for bid. It had never been bid once in 22 years. But this had been not even 22 months, and there was this great urgent need, in that person's opinion, to bid this contract. They were ready to authorize the city manager that night to go out to bid. And I said, "He couldn't do that. He had to bring it to this meeting." Mr. Riley, listen to the tape. He and I spoke afterwards. After he listened to that tape, he told me what was gonna happen. And I was just blown away. I was blown away that we lost a fine attorney, an excellent attorney. There was a comment made last time that, "Well, we'll bid it out, and if Fred Riley's the best we can do, then we'll keep him." You'll never be better than Fred Riley, never. This man has given this city umpteen free hours. See how many attorneys give free hours? See if any of the attorneys that will bid on this job, if any attorneys bid on this job, give you free hours. He's also given expert legal advice, and I know, I'm an attorney. I can speak from authority. Yes, he's told people some things they don't want to hear. And then some follow it sometimes because they know more. Fred Riley did an excellent job. Not only did he do an excellent job, he did an excellent job about defusing some very difficult situations, not just here, but on the outside. What comes to mind was our city manager ripping out campaign signs last year. And a citizen, I believe his name was Mr. Alfandulos, came to our council meeting. This man happened to be a partner in a major law firm that specialized in constitutional law. And he said, "I'm not going to sue your city," but basically, I could've. Fred Riley worked with him to diffuse the situation and make sure he never got into another 1983 lawsuit. You can thank Fred Riley for that. He did that all himself. And there's been other times when he's intervened and stopped really, you know, potentially dangerous situations, legal dangerous situations, from becoming dangerous situations. He's a fine attorney. He's an honest attorney. He's a good man. I'm gonna miss you. It's a loss, a great loss to our city, a great loss. And this mayor will always support you, and I'll support you if I'm not the mayor, and I will defend you against anybody who wants to give some revisionist history. I was here and know what he said, and I know what he did. You're an excellent attorney in my book. So I share your sentiments, Mr. Hansik. Mr. Gunn?
With respect to the sign that the council agreed to acquire, that was the original sign design that was brought to this council when we recently went out to look for an electronic sign. And that design was unanimously considered appropriate at the time, and the design that we wanted with the whip. At that time, the council, when they found out the sign was in excess of $50,000, the council said, "No, we think we can do better than that." And we sent the contractor back to the drawing board, and they came back with a sign that was $20,000 cheaper. So without belaboring, going through any additional cycles on this thing, we voted for the original design at a much reduced cost. So I recognize that no amount of discourse will change anyone's opinion in here. But that was the sign that was unanimously voted for, except for the price originally by the council. I respect your First Amendment rights, as does everybody on this council. And thank you very much for bringing those to the fore. Thank you.
Leslie?
I wanna agree with what Dave said and what the mayor said. I was very upset to get the resignation notice. He's done a wonderful job for us, been very understanding through some difficult times. And I don't want to go. Could you rescind your resignation?
Yeah, I'll second that. Anybody else?
No.
Wouldn't we?
I can count. So out of seven, I can count four. I appreciate the comments everyone's made, but I don't see a compelling reason for that. Unless you all have something else you wanna tell me.
Mr. Riley, I think if the council's had a full session here with all our members, I think you would get four votes. I think you would get four votes if Robin Aki was here.
I'm going to be, continue to be, hopefully, a consummate professional. I came into this job. It has been very difficult because, as I've said before, the council has very different viewpoints, and there's been conflict during the time that I've been here. And I've done my very best to bridge the conflict. The way I took the vote that you had at a meeting where I wasn't in attendance was basically a vote of no confidence. And that's fine. You can have a vote of no confidence, but if that's what I'm faced with, I can count. And I really don't have any grand desire to go through the procedure of going through an RFP for a position that I currently have. I would hope that each one of the seven of you would recognize that I have done a good job under difficult circumstances. But having said all that, if y'all decide it's time to make a change, that's fine. There's not going to be hard feelings from me. I am a professional. I've been a lawyer for almost 35 years. And this isn't the first time that I and a client saw things differently, and we parted ways. And as a professional, I will part ways, and I will wish you the best, and I hope you'll do the same for me. So that's a roundabout answer to your question. But it has been, the thing that deters me from reconsidering anything is the level of conflict on the council. And I don't know that I can fix that. I can't. I admit it will fix it in two years. So if y'all decided it was time to make a change, I respect your decision, and I will graciously step aside.
Mr. Riley, I have a proposal for you. It's always nice making a proposal in front of 50 people. Item eight on the agenda tonight is for the council to authorize the city manager to bid for services for interment. Now, if your resignation stays, we have no choice but to approve that. Even I would have to vote for that one because our city must have a city attorney. However, we're gonna open that up for discussion. And I just heard Leslie Nataro say something. And Leslie was one of the people that supported bringing this up to originally, bringing this to this discussion. But now it seems like there's been a change of opinion. I can count too. And what I'm leaning is Leslie Nataro is on our side here. We have Leslie. We have Frank Baggar. And we have, I know Robin Aki when she gets back, she voted against you and you belong with me. So you may have your four votes. And I don't want this to be something, I'm never gonna hold you to something that you don't want to do. Our city right now needs a competent, excellent attorney more than ever. We need someone to get... And you can see what's going on in the council. I can't help you. I'll do my best to try and help you make the council work together. It's gonna be a little bit of an effort, I think, given the situation, but we'll try. I'll commit to that. I'll do my best for what that's worth. It'll take six other people to do that. But I'm gonna ask you to reconsider. You don't have to make a decision right this moment, but item eight is coming up. And at that point, I'm gonna ask you to, you know, what you might want to do. I can call a special council meeting and wouldn't lose any ground. Again, I can't let the city have no attorney, so I have to vote for that. But I've been voting because you're not in the position, not because I want you out of the position. That's a big difference. And I think Leslie's also the other attorney up here. We have two real attorneys on this council. And she recognizes how good you are. You all do.
Well, I'll make one more comment, and that is, the unfortunate thing that you, this board, and every other board in Florida has is you can't discuss things unless you're in a public meeting to discuss them. So I fully understand why that makes things complex. I fully understand, you know, there may be a difference of opinion, and that's fine. Again, stress, I respect the fact that there are differences of opinion. And I'd be tolerant until item eight comes up. So I guess it's my answer for now.
Mr. Riley, the baby's crying. Baby wants to hear too. Anyone else on council? We have Mr. Hansik sitting here. Sure do. I think you do. Go ahead.
First off, all right, Mr. Gunn, thank you for your comment. I appreciate that about my First Amendment rights. I'm gonna take it seriously. And yes, in conjunction with what just transpired here, I followed the strategic plan being built and everything, and how that was supposed to be the cornerstone, your roadmap, if you will, council, about to conduct business for the city. If I may, because I've seen it different times in the course of time, where personal opinion gets in the way of city business and it clouds judgment. That's not what you're up there for. I have been in elected office, not public office, but I've been in elected office. And one of the things that I was always told, don't think about what's good for the short term, what's good for the organization, what's best for the organization. In this case, the organization is the city of Better Beach. It's citizens. That's who y'all serve. Listen to the citizens, weigh their input. And again, 70% of the people, I understand, sign's a dead issue. But it's like you thumbed your nose at us. What's in the best interest of the city going forward? That's all I ask as a taxpayer and a citizen, and I'm sure these folks out here, that's all they ask. Put the citizenship aside. It's we, the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hansik. Any other citizens like to address the council? Yes, sir.
My name's Barry Gray, 12th Street. One question, actually, too. First, who's gonna be the arbiter of the truth that's gonna go on the sign? Two, do you have a public information officer?
I'm sorry. I could barely hear your comments, Mr. Gray. You gotta talk right into that mic. We spent thousands of dollars funding a new system.
Sorry. Who's gonna be the arbiter of the truth that's gonna go on the sign? Who's gonna decide what your message is? And do you have a public information officer?
There is no public information officer, and the sign is controlled by our city manager. Any other citizens like to address council? Seeing no other hands, I'll close citizen comments and move to the presentation by the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office. I see two sheriff's officers. Will one of you be making the presentation tonight?
Evening, council. In regards to any new items to discuss regarding crime in the city, there's nothing new or anything to pass on. Everything is new for the city to live in from a crime perspective. live in from a crime perspective.
Good clarification, good.
Any questions, concerns, comments?
Sheriff, I love it when you bring me a bunch of zeros, you know, zero crime, zero, nothing, I mean, we had nothing again, this is, I think, two months in a row. Kudos to the men and women on the department, excellent job as always, excellent job to our citizens who are out there paying attention to what's going on in their neighborhoods because they don't do it alone, they have some good help, but it doesn't get any better than this, so all I can say is thank you and please keep up the wonderful work.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else? That we can clap on both sides. The sheriff walked away, did anybody have any questions for him while he was up here? Okay, thank you. All right, we have item four is presidential, presentation of Florida League of Cities' certificate of completion for the Leadership Academy One to Vice Mayor David Gaddis, fourth in a series with focus on characteristics to lead to the opportunities and challenges of municipal service, so we have that down here in the presentation table. All right, so I'm going to present this certificate of completion to Vice Mayor Gaddis, completed Leadership Academy One, this is run by the Florida League of Cities, we have a certificate for you and it looks like all of that are also, so congratulations. Okay, next four, four items are consent agenda, I'm going to read all four of them, I'll ask for a motion and we will approve them. There's no discussion on a consent agenda item, folks, so we're just going to pass this fairly quickly. Consent agenda, item number five, approval of July twelfth, twenty twenty-one city council meeting minutes. Item six, approval of July nineteenth, twenty twenty-one budget workshop minutes. Item seven, approval of July seventeenth, special city council meeting minutes. And eight, request, well, IMA is in consent agenda, request authorization for city manager to advertise for legal services. I do believe we're going to have some discussion maybe on that and we've already passed the agenda.
Can I move at this point to remove item eight from the consent agenda?
I'm going to have to defer to that, city attorney, because I thought that we have, once an agenda's passed, you can't move.
Before I pull my hair out.
Yeah, me too, but you've got a lot more than me, so pull. Can we move at this, at this point, I thought once an agenda's approved, you can't, I mean, we're not deleting it, we're just moving it off the consent agenda.
To thoroughly discuss any item, I don't see why you couldn't do that.
We're not removing it, we're just moving it into the regular business. Okay, item motion by Leslie Nataro to move item eight into the regular agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Frank Bankardt, discussion? Leslie, your first.
We've discussed it, I think we need to have some discussion, that's why I want to move it off the consent and put it on the regular.
All right, I think we need a discussion, whether it passes or doesn't pass, I think we need to discuss this in fairness to Mr. Riley and to the citizens of this city. Bankardt, anyone else, comments? I'll move to the city residents, any comments? Back to council, Leslie, you have the last word.
Let's go then.
Okay, so what we're voting on now is a simple movement, we're not passing anything, we're taking item eight off the consent agenda, we're going to move it, actually it's going to be the next item, so it's going to go right to the regular agenda right before item nine, so a yes vote moves that. Let's do this, Patty, I'm going to do this, I want this done by voice, not by voice vote, by one poll, okay?
Councilmember Banker?
Yes.
Councilmember Gunn?
Nay.
Councilmember Nataro?
Yes.
Councilmember Swope?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Gaddis?
Nay.
Mayor Manza?
I, so because we're missing Robinaki, we're deadlocked at three-three, so the motion fails, so I'll call this consent agenda with item eight in it, request authorization for the city manager to advertise for legal services and this would allow him to, the explanation was consent consensus and budget workshop to advertise a request for proposals. Just note that consensus was five to two and one of the persons who voted five was, didn't hear what he was voting on, so it was really four to three probably. Okay, motion to approve the consent agenda in its totality, again, I'm going to ask that this be done in a voice, in a polled vote. So what we're doing, I'll call this question properly, I've got to reread it, item five, six, seven, and eight, approval of, five, approval of the July twelfth, twenty twenty-one city council meeting minutes, item six, approval of July nineteenth, twenty twenty-one budget workshop minutes, item seven, approval of July nineteenth, twenty twenty-one special city council meeting minutes, and item eight, request authorization for the city manager to advertise for legal services for the city attorney. A yes vote passes all of them, no vote killed it. Madam clerk.
Councilmember Banker?
No.
Councilmember Gunn?
Aye.
Councilmember Nataro?
No.
Councilmember Swope?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gaddis?
Aye.
Mayor Manza?
Absolutely not, so it's three to three, and guess what? Consent agenda is not approved. We will not have any further discussion on item eight though, so that will come up as a special meeting if we need to do. We're without a city attorney, folks, in two weeks. Is it two weeks, Mr. Riley? Two weeks, right, we have left?
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth, we're without a city attorney. Regular agenda, park and, item nine, regular agenda, park and recreation board event approval, this is for council approval of the events that have been proposed by the board, funding is in the approved budget. I thought I saw the parks board chairperson here, is she still here? Yes, would you like to speak with us before we do this?
No, I mean, if you have any questions.
I think we will, yeah, I know I will, so why don't you come on? First, let me get a motion.
So move.
Dave Gaddis, second?
Nay.
Second, we're just woke. Dave?
Nope, that's here.
Okay, then just give us your information for the record and then whatever you wish to tell us regarding the proposal and then we'll go with council questions, then citizen questions.
Okay, I'm not sure if you want me to read this or, I mean, I...
Everyone, okay, so everyone's received a copy of it, hopefully they reviewed it, if you want to just hit us with the highlights and any information that you couldn't put on there that maybe you want to extrapolate on or, you know, anything that you think we need to know before everybody has, there may not be any questions, but I have a few, so.
Yeah, okay, no problem. So we have three events that we're looking at towards the end of the year that we're asking you to vote on. One is Jazz in the Park, which is Saturday, September twenty-fifth, from five to eight, so we're just trying to keep them, I, just from bringing this up over the last couple of months, we just tried to cover everybody's points, like we wanted to make sure it was a Beller Beach private party, residents only, we wanted to keep it simple, it's just low-key, not a lot, no vendors, just relax and listen to some music, sit outside, enjoy the weather and get to know some of our neighbors that we don't know. So we tried to keep it simple with the budget and if you have any questions about anything on there, you guys have questions about parking and we provided the schematics of like where things would be, because there's so little, you know, there was just maybe two or three things on each map. The second event would be basically like a Pet and Pals Halloween costume parade for the kids and I know there's a lot of dogs in this community, so it's just a morning event, a simple parade and then a contest and then we had some nice prizes for first, second, and third place because I know, I've seen these before and people go to a lot of trouble and they spend a lot of money for some of these costumes, so we wanted to make sure that they were, you know, if they really won first place, that they, you know, was appreciative of their prize. And then the third one is just a super simple holiday social tree lighting on Monday, December sixth, from five to six before council meetings. So we figured people would be here and just a little holiday cheer, I put out a bid for some Christmas carolers and just we would have some, you know, whatever, just using hot chocolate, depending on the weather, so. I mean, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have, pretty much have all the information and path that was provided.
I don't really have any questions, but I did want to thank you for this report, that's what I've been asking for for a very long time. It was very detailed, very organized, and I really appreciate it, so thank you very much.
Chairperson Venda, I had some questions for you.
Sure.
And I was at the last event, participated in it, as leave most of the people up on this council, and I saw the spin, I read the spin and then I...
Sorry, what, I don't know what you meant here.
The last, well, the big event that we had there is Jazz in the Park and it's analogous to the festival that we had.
I wasn't at it, so I'm not familiar with anything.
Right, I was, so that's why I'll give you some information, okay? First off, there was no problem with outsiders attending this, we had a handful of people that attended, I believe one or two people actually commented from Indian Rocks, what a wonderful time they had in our city, they got to see it, a chance that they didn't really normally get. There was no overflow, streets were not crowded with people, in fact, the only people that parked on the streets were the vendors, it was far from, there was no street that was full of people. In fact, the Citywise Garage, that causes one hell of a mess on our streets, this caused no mess on the street. So I don't know that we have to be exclusionary and I say that for a reason, okay? Let's, let me finish and then you have a chance to speak, okay? Because I have to vote on this right now and it's not sitting well with me and I'll tell you why it's not sitting well with me. We fight with other cities that are exclusionary, that tell us we can't go on their white sand and we can't put our chair wherever they don't want it to be and here we are saying you can't come to our park on Sunday or a Saturday to listen to some jazz music. I mean, this isn't the Clearwater Jazz Festival, this is a small local thing, which I hope that will get nice attendance with our citizens, but it doesn't bother me if someone from Beller Shore or Indian Rocks or Clearwater comes and visits our city and I'll tell you why, I visit their cities, I go to Largo for their tree lighting, I went to Indian Shores for their Memorial Day picnic, I was invited by their mayor, but it was a beautiful event and it was open to everybody, you had to pay if you were an outsider, but you were able to go and all the other cities host us, they don't say go home and I have a real problem putting my name into something where we're going to tell people go home and that's my first question is, how are you going to police this? That's my first, you can answer them all at once, I'm just going to give them to you then turn the floor back to you, so first is how are we going to police this? Are you really going to send somebody home if they're, you know, from Indian Rocks? I don't like that, that's the first thing.
May I answer in order?
No, let me finish and then you can, you'll have the floor back, okay? I want to get all my points out and then I'll turn it back over to you. This event's not self-funding, last time we did the, we did the festival, the big, a big concern of the council was we set aside a budget for it, but the budget was to be used in the event, that the sponsorship and the sales and other things that we did didn't cover the amount of the, of the festival. Well, not only did that parks board cover it, they made seventeen hundred dollars worth of profit, which they turned over to the city manager and then they did other events like the Halloween parade and stuff, they in charge of that. So when I look at this, I mean, the only thing I see that there's a vendor, there's an Italian ice vendor, they're not even getting revenue from that, so the question would be is sponsorship opportunities and or vendor opportunities to try and make this thing, I mean, this is two thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars for this festival and there's really no offset to it, so it's really just the city dipping into its pocket to do it and again, I don't have a problem if we tried and said, well, we only got a thousand dollars of vendors or of sponsorship, we had people who sponsored last time, they just outright gave us contributions and I don't see that in here, so that was my second question and not self-funding, yeah, that was it, that was everything, so basically that it's not self-funding in how you're going to exclude people. If you could convince me that, you know, it's not going to be a scene, because the last thing I need is some nice family coming over the bridge saying, oh wow, there's music in the park, we want to go and listen and then we have a big to-do and the sheriff's telling them to go home and we put the sheriff in a bad place, I don't like that, so I'll turn it back over to you and I'm coming back to council then, okay?
Yeah, no worries. Okay, so for the first, being exclusionary, I was only listening to the comments that were made earlier in the year and I believe that you yourself, like, mentioned IDing people, which we would never do. I'm more than happy to have people from anywhere that walk over the bridge, we would never exclude anybody, but it seemed to be such a concern of people that were coming to me saying, we're concerned about parking, we're concerned about, you know, just there'd be crowding, about like blocking like entryway and so, and like, we need a parking schematic, so I was only answering what was requested of us. We would never turn anybody away and then as far as the fundraising, we voted, because you mentioned that a couple of months ago, we voted as a board, there are basically four of us and just pulling what's on this paper off is going to be a challenge, but we can do it, but as far as like fundraising and like getting lots of vendors out here, it just wasn't, it just wasn't possible. So if we were going to do a fundraising event, because we've already been approved this budget, we would do it for a charity or we would try to raise money for something for a cause, we wouldn't try to raise money to offset this. So if you, if you don't want to have these, we're not married to that, we don't, I mean, I don't lose one minute of sleep if these things don't happen, it's not to like prove the point, I wasn't at any of the past events, I didn't really even know what I walked into. I was just trying to do something good and fun and like enjoy, like, I don't, I don't, I believe in that for people that are sitting here. So if you really don't want to have these events, I don't mind, like, but we're willing to do the work and we're willing to like do this and these are so small and we said because we're new and we've never done anything like this before, we wanted to start small so we would be successful. If, if we like get out over our skis and have all these vendors, all these people, like, what, we just couldn't do it, so we voted as a board and this was what we came up with, if you don't want to do it, we're fine with it, like, we're happy with what we're doing, we feel like we're bringing good things, like, as far as like, you know, different activities people can attend and different things that they can buy, like Beller Beach t-shirts and, you know, beach towels and stuff like that, so it's up to you, if you guys can vote, I'm not going to fight about it, it's completely up to you. So hopefully that helps.
It does and no one's trying to tell you can't do it, I'm just, my job is, you know, I heard a lot last time, I heard a lot, it had to be self-funded, it had to be the greatest event since Woodstock.
I know, I did sell that, so I mean, I just, I feel like I'm afraid, I mean, we've tried to stay out of the fray and I feel like I've been pushed into this.
Yeah, that's not what I'm trying to do, I want to know what the opportunities were for funding and you answered the question. I have one other suggestion to you, this is something probably nobody ever thought about, but I did, it's September twenty-fifth, sun sets at seven twenty-one and you have this going until eight o'clock, so I don't believe we have lighting back there, you might want to start this one hour early from four to seven and this way you'll have everybody leaving in the light and they'll see what they're doing as opposed to being in the dark, just a suggestion. Council?
I think you're doing a great job and it's going to be hard to live up to the expectations that were set by the last event, however, as far as the, the problem with people coming in from the outside, I would never expect anyone to turn someone away coming over that bridge or walking off the beach and enjoying our event. I think what they were trying to say is, don't advertise, don't call people from neighboring cities and, and turn it into a giant festival. Basically festivals like that, of that proportion are designed to draw e-commerce, or not e-commerce, but commerce into a community that actually has businesses, they have, they want people to come for that reason, we don't have that, therefore, I don't mind it being small, I think it's a great thing, I prefer the intimate Beller Beach setting where we get to know people, whenever the crowds are large, you just can't do that, so I think you're right on track, yep, it's going to cost a little bit of money, it's not a whole lot and I'm sure that now that the word is out, there probably will be some donations coming in that may help offset that cost, so a great job and I'm very, very organized, I love the report, love the map, I can tell a lot of work went into this, I also listened to about half of the meeting recording and I was very impressed with the entire team.
Thank you very much. Ryan?
I think you're spot on, I think the original intent was start small, baby steps and build on that, you were given a budget, you're working within the budget and there was never any exclusionary thing, we, we thought that in order to keep it small, we just managed that through marketing and putting on fires and stuff like that, so I think you're spot on, my vote is we move forward and go forth in great ways, good job.
I think you've done an excellent job.
Frank, Frank, you got to get that mic real close to you.
I think you've done an excellent job, a lot of job, drives and everything. It's not just an old stickler in the blood. I don't believe government should be dabbling. We need to entertain people and the taxpayers respect. Because not all taxpayers will be entertaining, or involved in this. As Mr. Gadd says, you know, when you see the big signs like in Indian Rock Beach, we'll teach best. That is because they have businesses, okay? And those businesses are putting up the funds and everything like that. I think government should stay out and entertain people. No disrespect.
No, but like I said, we're not married to these events. If you guys don't want them, it's just less for, for us. Like, we're fine with it, but we're more than happy to do it if you guys would like us to do it. I mean, it's just...
I think you give him the first comment, so Glenn's going to go ahead. Go ahead, Glenn.
No, I was just going to say that, you know, the third priority in the strategy to plan is community. And this, this festival is basically an opportunity to bring us to Bellar Beach together. Meet your neighbors and build a little camaraderie and community cohesion. So, yeah. The entertainment part is what we give, but the real priority and purpose is bringing our community together. That's all.
Could you hear me? Council comments? Citizens? If there are no citizen comments, back to council. Dave, you want me to call this question?
Sure.
So what I'm going to do is I'm going to call it one at a time. It's not going to be three or zero, so it's going to go one at a time. We'll do a voice vote on each of these. First is to approve September twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one Jazz in the Park Festival. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. So we have four to two. Opposed are Bankard and Manza. October thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one Pets and Pals Halloween Custom and Parade, Custom Parade and Contest, ten AM to twelve PM. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
It is five to one. Bankard opposed. December sixth, two thousand twenty-one Holiday Social and Tree Lighting from five to six PM. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Six to one. Bankard opposed. I'm sorry, five to one. Bankard opposed. Okay, so all three events are all the rest. And please give consideration to changing that time out whenever I have to.
Alright, yeah, no problem.
Make for a lot safer event. Thank you, and thank you to the committee for the hard work. Before we get into the next discussion at seven twelve, we've gone for an hour almost in fifteen. Does anyone need a break? No one needs a break, we'll move on. Item ten. Authorize the city manager to proceed with providing code enforcement services internally. Description is to provide in-house code enforcement for cost savings with more code enforcement hours. Motion was made by the city manager. First, I need a motion.
So moved.
Leslie Nutero makes the motion. Sir? It gets seconds. Leslie Nutero. Leslie, your motion, you get to talk first.
I think this makes perfect sense. For years, we had our own code enforcement officer rather than paying the sheriffs to do it. And I think it makes sense to do it this way financially and logistically.
And the council?
I agree with Councilmember Nutero one hundred percent.
Would this be the removal of the deputy altogether, or are we still going to use the deputy part-time?
Well, the deputy wouldn't be used at all. It's, it's how code enforcement's done by the sheriff. It's how many ever hours we want to assign to them, so. So we would take the sheriff completely out of the equation, right? The problem I have with that is, when you have an active sheriff deputy on the street, and you have a public, public employee doing code enforcement, active deputy knocks on the door, I'm just going to use like short-term rounds. Knocks on the door and starts asking questions, okay? Probably going to get a lot of lies, alright? And then can we say, this is an official investigation. If you lie to me, it's now become a felony. Our code enforcement officer doesn't have that authority. I would think that we should keep the deputy on some type of a retainer to do certain things like that. Our code enforcement person can always, you know, the grass cuttings and other things and contractors, not the body by the law or whatever like that. Use our in-house people in that. But to take away that official capacity of an officer of the law, I think we just put ourselves in a bad situation.
I'd like to ask a question.
Okay, and then I, yeah, sorry, Glenn's answer, go ahead.
Lynn, do you know if, if the deputy actually went through and memorized our, our code?
No, he, he did not. We, that's part of my concern that we have this partial issue with not knowing all the codes. He's the deputy sheriff, that's what he is. He's not, he's, he's not a trained code enforcement officer. He, he was a retired deputy. And I don't have anything against Danny, who is our current deputy. The fact of the matter is, I'm looking at it from the bigger picture. If you want to keep the sheriff, that's fine with me. But, what I want the council to do is realize it's going to probably cost you another fifteen or twenty thousand dollars in code enforcement. Because, we need, if we're going to use the sheriff as code enforcement, we need to use it more hours, okay? Right now, he gets twelve, eight, you know, depending on what we need him for. But, a lot of things get missed. I'm going to give you an example of something that happened today, last week. He sent an email in to, to have grass notice sent out, okay? Because it was too high. Today, he sends an email and says, well, we need to do a notice of abatement because it's thirty-six inches high. This is what the email says to me. And I'm sitting here saying, wait a minute. How did the grass grow from seven inches to thirty-six inches in a week? Well, that tells me that we didn't pay attention to it. And, and I went and looked at the lot and it's probably more like eighteen or twenty inches. But, as far as short-term rentals, that's an iffy subject. I mean, we've had complaints from the, the property owners that the sheriff is harassing them. So they're kind of up in the air about the short-term rentals. I will tell you that. And we have caught them. The example on Eighth Street, there's two of them. We've had two hearings for that house. And we're investigating possibly a thorough. So, but, you know, so to me, at this point, if you want to leave the sheriff, then what I'm going to ask you to do in the budget is increase the, the budget to a half-time person, which will cost us about fifty-three thousand dollars annually.
Why couldn't we use both?
I think it conflicts it, because it, it creates a conflict between who's doing what. We're still doing all the administration anyway. So sheriff isn't doing the administration.
As Mr. Gadd would say, you know, did he read the whole code?
No.
He said no. So, you say to Dan, okay, this is what you're going to do, Dan. These are the codes we want you to enforce. The ones that we believe that we're not going to get snuggled on, alright? And we get our in-house person with the easy ones, the grass, and read order or whatever. But the ones that we need an officer of the law, you should have that ability. And as I heard other people in council say, when it comes to spending money, we got the money and I don't want to spend any money, okay? But, I think this is money well spent.
I don't think splitting it up is a good idea. I, I really don't. I think you either have to do it this way or this way. And I don't have a problem with either way. You know, I've actually discussed it with Danny. I've discussed it with the sheriff's office. And, and they will say that they need more hours. So, if that's what the council chooses to do, if we do twenty hours a week, it will cost us about fifty-three thousand dollars a year for code enforcement. Plus, we're still spending money because the administrative person who is Laura still has to do all the letters. The sheriff doesn't do anything with that. They, they don't, they don't touch any of the administrative function of the process.
So she's going to be tasked with more work?
She's doing that now.
Yeah, but, yeah, but now she'll be going fieldwork.
Well, that's why I asked for a part-time person in the office. That's...
How much is that going to cost us?
It's a wash with the current situation.
So if it's a wash, then why would we want to get rid of the sheriff department?
It's a, it's a wash if you don't have the sheriff's department, is what I'm telling you. It's a wash in cost-wise.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, you're going to be bringing on somebody part-time, right? And that's a wash?
Right. It, that'll be, it'll, it'll be a wash because we're going to use that part-time person to fill in for Laura internally.
Alright, got it.
And then Laura will go out in the field. So, the, the cost difference in code enforcement is a, is a wash currently. Now, if you want to leave the sheriff, then we just need to increase the budget.
Yeah, what I'm saying is we're going to use two civilians when we're giving up a deputy or an officer of the law. It just doesn't make any sense.
Lynn, are you ready to help with the abatement?
Hang on one second. Glenn Dunn has the floor next to me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Please get my attention first before you just jump in. Mr. Dunn, go ahead.
A little corporate history on this thing. Several councils back, we moved to go to a sheriff's office because we felt that we needed some authority to adopt the uniform and badge program. Reluctantly, it was undertaken because there were some current concerns about training and that sort of thing. The city manager has been monitoring the situation and, you know, training was a consideration for this thing. And the results just going to come around with this thing. The guy who manages this thing tactically, he's a city manager, he's saying he can do a more effective job, more efficiently, cost neutral, if we go with his proposal. We always have a sheriff's deputy on par within Bellar Beach, and he can be tasked with code enforcement. Is that, is that my understanding?
Well, he, he could be, you know, if we have an issue that we need the code enforcement to deal with it, yes, he can be tasked.
So, so I guess my point is we're covered with the sheriff's office.
So we're going to call the sheriff, Mr. Dunn, if we have a...
No, not to go check the grass or police the grass, but...
How about, how about a hit the rattle box?
A what?
That's going to, that should be the tactical supervisor's job. I'm not going to micromanage this guy.
Well, that's what I'm...
He says he can do it more effectively, more efficiently.
Can do it more efficiently. The word efficient is...
Guys, guys, I'm, wait, there's not supposed to be a cross-talk. And I, I appreciate the debate, but let's have, Mr. Dunn has the floor. Come back to you, Mr. Bankard. Go ahead, Glenn Dunn.
And lastly, the thing is, is with the change in the Florida statutes where you cannot call in an audience, it's going to put more strain on the code enforcement system. So you need to have somebody out there who is well-versed, well-trained, and it's going to take one of our people to do that and knows the codes. And right now, that's, that's Laura, so...
Well, you, you make, you make a good point, Glenn. Don't want to interrupt you, but, with this new law. And I advise all you people out there to tell your friends and neighbors, call your council person when you have a complaint and make them belly up to the bar and file the complaint with the city so you can stay anonymous.
Just a real quick question, city manager Reeves. How many times has the sheriff knocked on a rental property and nobody's answered because the man is standing there in a uniform in the sheriff's vehicle?
Oh, that, that happens regularly. And we do get a lot of complaints about that, that they're sending a sheriff's deputy and they can, you know, we, we just had one recently that complained that he didn't want the sheriff's deputy on his property. You know, that house actually. And, and I think you may get a little more information from the sheriff's deputy, maybe sometimes, but, you know, I've dealt with the short-term runs myself on various occasions. And I got, I've got more information out of the people who are there than the sheriff's deputy has in the past. And I, I think it's just the individualism sometimes. How do you handle it? That's really where I think it is. But, like I said, all I'm asking is, if, if you want to leave it as it is, all I'm asking you to do is increase the budget so I can stay with the sheriff. We've got twenty hours a week.
I'd like to say a few words. So I've been watching this for the last two years, and I've been told I can't talk about it. I was told that by Danny Doherty, who's been telling me what's been going on. And y'all aren't going to like some of the stuff I have to say. And don't bother to call it point of order because every piece of this is a fact. A fact. From a deputy, remember? We are support blue in this city. Okay, let's talk about Deputy Doherty. Number one, he was invited personally by me tonight. I don't see him here. Sheriff, you hear me? Please tell Sheriff Colteary how disappointed I am in him. Not for the patrol that you did here. That was perfect. Your superiors would not let Deputy Doherty come here tonight and speak for himself. They told him he could not come to this meeting, not in uniform, not as a civilian. Does nineteen eighty-three mean anything to the sheriff? It should. You've just deprived that man of his opportunity to speak to this council. Deputy Doherty offered to do ride-alongs with every one of us so that we could see what he goes through. And I don't place blind allegiance into Mr. Reeves or to anyone else. As Ronald Reagan said, trust but verify. I'll trust, but I'll verify what you tell me. And let's verify some of that stuff you give. You just told people here. You don't get information from the sheriff's office. Well, this is something that's near and dear to my heart, because I serve on the emergency board in all of Pinellas County. And I'm in the process of trying to get us a new CAD system. That's Computer Assisted Dispatch. That puts all the information about a call that not only the sheriff's disposal, but in the future, we hope that it'll put it at fire and ambulance. That's what we're trying to do. What I'm holding here are CAD reports. Laura Madaloni could never do this. This is in the sheriff's system, okay? Every time Danny Doherty hits a building or a, or a house in this town, there's a record of it. I'll give you one example. I'm not going to say the place. Trash in roadway. Remove trash in northbound lanes of Gulf Boulevard, placed it in the dumpster in City Hall, Gulf Boulevard and Twentieth. Every time he goes someplace, this is in the CAD system. Why is that important? You can search upon it. If there's any criminal activity or if there's a pattern of any problems in that house, the sheriff can use it for law enforcement. That's a benefit that the sheriff gives us that we'll never get going inside. That's number one. Frank Bankard's talking about having a uniformed officer. One of the reasons that we did this was that we would have, we only have one person at any given moment in Bellar Beach. And that's all we need. We're a small city and it's working great so far. This gives us a second person. There have been multiple opportunities where Danny Doherty answered a call while he was doing code. He was the responding officer. And Lynn Reeves yelled at him for doing it. He saved a person. It was a hot call. It was an assault. And he was the first responder. He was only a block or two away. He heard it, he responded. He also hit the pause button on his timer of the time that he gives us in Bellar Beach. He finished the hot call, put himself at risk, because he's a darn good officer. And he answered that call, and then he came back and he gave us more time than his shift. His shift has been progressively cut down over time. One of the reasons why we went to an outside code enforcement officer is that our internal code enforcement officer doesn't work weekends. Well, guess what? Bad people, bad, bad boys and girls. When are you going to put that new roof on or put that new door in that you don't want code to see? Let me give you an opportunity. Saturday, Sunday? Yeah, that would be the right answer. And that's exactly what they did. As for having the, what we're saying that he doesn't know the, the code memorized. Don't challenge anybody to memorize our code. Do you know it's illegal to have a lawn chair in your front yard for more than twenty-four hours? Go and see any of the cities that have that one, okay? Yeah, the baby even knows that's wrong, okay? Nobody knows that, and nobody's going to be enforcing that. We have some laws that are just shaking my head at and go, why did we put this here, okay? It's a beach community. It's not a condo association. So, maybe he doesn't know everyone, but he knows the main ones. When he first came on, I met him. And I said, Danny, I had a lot of complaints about the past. It was when I went around door to door. I was like Frank Bankard. I went door to door. That was my number one complaint. Uneven code enforcement, lack of code enforcement, retaliatory code enforcement. Uneven code enforcement, lack of code enforcement, retaliatory code enforcement. City manager will pull my campaign sign like he did, he leaves other people's in. Hmm, interesting. Maybe he wasn't a big supporter of me. That was all over the city with stuff like that. People were driven out of this city before they ever completed their house. That's verified. The person lived on Harbor Drive. They got so fed up in Beller Beach, they're like, we don't want to live here. I haven't had a complaint yet about Danny Dougherty, not a complaint yet. And I've told this story many times before. There was a house on the corner by me, it was tremendously overgrown for years, years. So you wonder just what our code people were doing, all of them, okay? And I watched Danny, I didn't hear him, but I watched him from my window deal with a fairly difficult owner. And that house, if you go there today, looks beautiful. It's not going to be on the cover of Better Homes and Gardens or anything. It is a nice-looking house, it fits in well. Danny did it without threats, without summonses, without hauling people into court. Danny Dougherty also, folks, he told me this story, again, he told me not to tell this stuff, so I had to sit by. When he first came here, somebody had a pile of debris. He was catching all kinds of flak from City Hall here. Danny and his daughter, on their own time, picked up this elderly person's debris and took it to the dump. And no good deed ever goes unpunished. He got to the bridge and it blew out of the back of his truck, and he had to pick it all up off the road, okay? That's Danny Dougherty, folks. Let me tell you something else Danny Dougherty just did. I'm not going to mention the lady's name although I know it and I think it's public record at this point. You know, you've all seen that, that commercial help, I've fallen and I can't get up, right? Well, that happened in Beller Beach. Woman's family called. No one's seen her for four days. Relatives didn't know where she was. Danny'd been on patrol, the house didn't look right to him. He isn't paying attention. Maybe he doesn't know every species of weed, but he knew something was wrong with that house. The other officers said, Danny, we can't go in, Danny's like, this is exigent circumstances we're going in. Finally, they tried to handle on the door. They opened up the door because it was wide open, and there was the lady, having fallen, couldn't get up for almost four days. She was near death. Danny Dougherty deserves our highest reward, folks. We lose our city attorney in one night and now we're going to lose our law enforcement code officer. Wrong. And that's not all. Mr. Reeves, I've heard about the treatment he's received in City Hall from you and Laura, and it's disgusting. You complained that I created a hostile work environment with you. He described your environment as toxic. You don't even, Patty Gentry, they don't even say good morning to this man. They got the nerve to go and take pictures with the police and say, we support blue. Well, that's how they treat them when they're not on camera, folks. His time has been progressively cut from 14 hours to eight hours. He doesn't work weekends anymore. In fact, he was told never to work without Lynn Reeves being present. Why? Does he not know what he's doing? Well, why don't you go pick up the telephone and call one of my counterparts, Mayor Mary Beth Henderson of Reddington? They use Danny Dougherty, and they're happier than a clam with him. He seems to know their code. Now, for all the people who are analytical and numbers people, I would like to see the comparison of how many things that Danny has found in this city and, and hits, which is this, versus what Laura's hit. I don't see much of the difference. The code reports look the same to me. I drive around the city, it looks very nice. Yes, we occasionally get an individual that creates a problem and it's taken care of, and it's done without problems. It's done without threats of law enforcement, it's done without being heavy-handed. I had to laugh when Mr. Reeves said that Danny was complaining about a short-term rental. I got one of those telephone calls, and guess what? I got a complaint about Mr. Reeves one time on a short-term rental. He was here on a Sunday and my doorbell's got him, and you know what I said? Ma'am, you can't have a short-term rental. And I support the city manager on that. Instead of faulting Danny Dougherty without even knowing what he did, how about supporting blue? That's what we're supposed to stand for, right? Terms of the money? Well, if we can spend $5,000 for a wave sign, don't tell me about the money. Um, we've used money here for what we want to use money. We just spent $4,000, $3,000, $4,000 for public relations events. How about safety and security? It's supposed to be our number-one thing in our strategic plan. Danny Dougherty is getting another bad deal from the city, and I don't like it. I don't like the way he's been treated. I don't like what I hear. I don't like the way this is being supervised. I don't like anything about this. He's an excellent sheriff. He's a highly skilled sheriff. This guy was an instructor for the SWAT team. He's no lightweight. He's smart and he has the right temperament. He's an excellent sheriff, and he's an excellent code officer. There is an option to do both. Other cities do it. I'm friends with a code officer in a big city, and I'm not going to say what city that is because I don't want that person to be harassed, but you can split it. And there's also another opportunity. The county offers code services, so we don't have to use Laura inside. But if we are going to do Laura inside for code, maybe everybody forgot this little tidbit, but I didn't forget it. When we gave Laura the inside job, I'm sorry, yeah, when she came inside, because she used to be full-time code, when she came inside, Mr. Reeves gave her a $6,000 raise. Well, if she's going to go outside for 40%, my accountant in me tells me, we get 2,400 back. You don't get a $6,000 raise and go back to do your own, your own job. I don't support this at all, and if we are going to support it, then let's get the money back when we need to claw it back because she's not doing the job that we gave her two years ago. She's doing a different job right now. I have nothing but complaints about Laura, nothing, and I've heard her personality. The other day, I heard a telephone call. June called headquarters. Sounded like there was a funeral going on here, the way that phone was answered, it was embarrassing. So quite frankly, I don't support this, and, and if we get all kinds of complaints, it's coming back to this council. Somebody said, bust out to admit. That same post told me I don't manage the city manager. You can't have it both ways. You vote for this, you own your vote. I get code complaints, we'll come back here and we'll deal with them as a council. I'm disgusted and embarrassed, and sheriff, when you tell Sheriff Goldieri that I was upset that Danny wasn't allowed to be here, also tell him that the mayor apologizes for the treatment that Deputy Dougherty got in Beller Beach.
I would just like to qualify Mr. Bankard's statement about anonymous calls, call your council member from past experiences under council. That's not necessarily true in light of sunshine and public records laws, right? I have seen people come back and do a public records request, asking for specific names. So I guess what I'm saying is, there is no cone of silence that comes down and gives you 100% anonymous details. Maybe you're always subject, and the council members are subject to public records requests. They can come out if it's really...
Oh, Mr. Gunn, as long as there's a record, you're right.
Right.
Mr. Gunn's right, as long as there's a public record, you're right. I'm on Sixth Street Beach just about every day, Monday through Friday, come see me, there's no record.
So the council, any other comments before I open up to citizens? Citizens, sir. Please talk right into that microphone.
I do have the experience now, so...
Perfect. We're still learning here.
Okay, so again, my name's Fuad, I'm a little redneck of Bay Shore. So I actually had a experience with the code enforcer, Danny is his name, not myself, but heard it through the neighbor next door. The experience that we, that my neighbor had, which was passed on to me, it was much more human, much more friendly dealing with the officer than the, the lady that who does the, uh... So I'm just out here to tell the council, the members, that we're here to support our existing code enforcer. Okay?
Thank you. Mr. Hanzick.
Chairman Hanzick, 22nd Street. For what it's worth, I concur with the previous speaker. Keep the deputy. We spend money in different places for different things. We can afford the extra money, I believe, to keep Deputy Dougherty on staff as he was originally supposed to be, not as it's been modified. I like the idea of having him on staff as an extra law enforcement based on what you described. So I encourage council to keep him as code enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanzick. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Lori, I live on Bay Shore, sitting next to my husband. I've had the good experiences with Officer Dougherty. I find him to be professional. I've had, I find him to be very good in neutralizing situations. We have had issues with neighbors, fences, things like that. I think he has a lot of good qualities in our commu-, that benefit our community with his approach to how he handles things. I have called over here a couple of different times and dealt with different people who answer the phone, and I have to concur that the demeanor and the lack of information is noticeable. We live here now full-time since 2014. We bought our house in 06. We were visiting from 06 to 2014. So anyways, we'll see in a minute, and I vote for keeping him on, and if that makes a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
June Vince Guo, 7th Street, Beller Beach. I've had a couple of opportunities to speak to the Deputy Dougherty, and, and in speaking to him, I, I've heard many a times, he's told me that he's backed up other deputies while he was on duty. Now, let's think about this. He cuts off the time clock for Beller Beach to make that happen. He goes on the sheriff's time clock with no added expense to the city so we have a backup. And, and with the, I spoke to him also about the lady that had fallen, and it was very disheartening to find out that this city, the neighbors didn't even know that this lady had health issues, or took the time. But we had an officer who paid attention, paid attention in our community to know when there's an issue, okay? He cared, and it's about, about him picking up that, that was not only Deputy Dougherty, but I want you to know that his daughter that helped him is also a sheriff deputy. So they both did that off the clock, out of the goodness of their heart, and that's what the sheriff is all about. They work with people, that's what we're supposed to be about, helping each other, being a community. And I don't see that happening with Laura. When we went around campaigning for the mayor, we heard nothing but complaint after complaint after complaint. Some people weren't even given enough time to respond to the notice that they were given to comply because they just moved in. They had no idea that these, these things had existed. So, so I say, we, we need to keep this deputy. Not only that, he has said time and time again that he is willing to work nights and weekends. When do we have a lot more problems? Nights, weekends. So why would we not do that, especially since our current code officer does not want to do that? Coupled with the fact, again, she was given $6,000 more to go into the office. That was the deal. So if she's coming back this street, we should get that money back. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments? They're being, um, coming back to council. Council. Leslie and Terry, you have the last word before I call the questions.
Just one.
Frank, and then Leslie will have last word. Go ahead.
I voted no on three items for parks. Couple colleagues said, you know, this is a great way to keep both, know your community. Haven't heard one person out there saying, get rid of him. So we'll see how this vote goes, whether we listen to you or not.
Yeah, and I'm just going to say, I had to endure 115 days of horns beeping outside my window because people supposedly support blue. Some people who were right on this council supported blue. They supported blue with financial contributions and they held signs. I'm going to lie watching that vote too, and so is that young lady with the camera. Go ahead. Leslie, you have the last word.
I think it makes sense, like they said, financially and logistically, to bring it back in-house.
All right, so here I'm calling the question at this point. Item 10, to authorize the city manager to proceed with providing code enforcement services internally. Madam Clerk, I'm going to ask that this role be called... No, you're not on the mic.
Councilmember Baker. Councilmember Gunn.
Yes.
Councilmember Notaro.
Yes.
Councilmember Swope.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gaddis.
No.
Mayor Manzo.
No. So motion fails. Danny will stay on, and I'll be...
I'd like to ask one question.
Sure.
As I told you earlier, it doesn't matter to me either way, but I think we need to increase the budget for 20 hours.
We have a budget session coming up, make your proposal. I want to talk with you about better utilizing the sheriff's time that we have for these events because we have the sheriff directing traffic, and that's not what I had in mind. So let's talk about cost savings areas and what we can do. That's a budget session, but I, I don't see why a few thousand, if that's our priority, should be a problem here.
Okay, so I'll, I'll make the adjustment and bring it to you later.
Yes, please. And Mr. Reeves? Mr. Dougherty and I are friends, so I'm just going to leave it at that, okay? He'll tell me what's happening.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I don't appreciate your negative comments about me.
I don't give a damn if you appreciate your negative comments. You treat this guy like garbage. Point of order. You treat this guy like garbage, and I'm sick with it.
Well, you don't hear both sides of the story.
No, I don't, but I hear his. I'll go, we support blue in my house. We're done with this discussion. Item 11, ordinance 21-05, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Beller Beach, Florida, providing for an amendment to section 22-33B16 of the city code ordinances, providing for incorporation of recitals, providing for approval of amendment to section 22-33B16 of the city code ordinances, providing for a copy to be kept on file, providing for severability, providing for the repeal of all ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing for an effective date, the description is to modify prohibited conditions that may cause flooding and adversely affect surrounding properties. Madam Clerk, am I correct, this is the first reading?
Yes.
Okay, it doesn't say that, but I'm going to put that note. There's two readings for those of you who are new to this. This is the first reading. There'll be a second reading if this passes at the next council meeting, a regular session, then it becomes an ordinance change. With that, may I have any motion?
So move.
Rita Swope makes the motion. Second is Frank Bankard, Rita Swope.
I'll go ahead and defer to our city manager.
City manager.
This ordinance change was recommended by the planning board when they did the code review. So this is the process we've been doing, bringing forward a couple each month to move those recommendations forward.
I note that there's the curb inserts, I think that's what we're talking about with the blocking of the curbs and valley curbs, and I think there's a, and I want to just check with the, with the city attorney that there is a, I know there's a provision for ADA accessibility. That was our biggest concern about that. We don't obviously want the curbs blocked because it restricts water. Is that, are you happy with that wording for ADA purposes? Is that sufficient?
I'm the author of that language.
And you're happy with it? Okay.
And I, in, in writing, I went and looked at a number of resources related to the ADA, and that is the specific language that's used, so it's consistent with the ADA guidelines. that is the specific language that's used, so it's consistent with the ADA guidelines that I reviewed.
Perfect. Thank you, Frank.
Yes, sir.
That was the only concern that I had. Anyone else on council? Or move to the citizens? Any comment on this ordinance? Back to council. Any other last words?
Oh, I'm ready for your comment, please.
I'm ready to do it too. Ordinance 21-07, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Bella Beach, Florida, providing for an amendment to section 22-33B16 of the city code ordinances, providing for incorporation of recitals, providing for approval of amendment to section 22-33B16 of the city code ordinances, providing for a copy to be kept on file, providing for severability, providing for the repeal of all ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing for an effective date. This is the first reading. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Did you just say ordinance 21-07?
If I did, it's 21-05. I'll stand corrected if I did say that and you were listening, so, yep. If that's it, 21-07 and 21-05. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Baker. Councilmember Gunn.
Aye.
Councilmember Notaro.
Aye.
Councilmember Swope.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gaddis.
Aye.
Mayor Manta.
Aye. Passes six to zero. First reading, madam clerk will advertise it, and we'll be back for a second reading in September, right? Perfect. How we all doing? Seven o'clock. Anybody break? Good? Nobody say anything, we're good. Ordinance 21-06, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Bella Beach, Florida, providing for amendments to section 10-2, 10-32B1, 10-32B4, 10-35, 10-37, 10-38A2, 10-7414, and 10-777 of the city code ordinances, providing for incorporation of recitals, providing for approval of amendments to section 10-2, 10-32B1, 10-32B4, 10-35, 10-37, 10-38A2, 10-7414, and 10-777 of the city code ordinances, providing for a copy to be kept on file, providing for severability, providing for the repeal of all ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing for an effective date. The description is to modify the legal standards relating to buildings, related to buildings and building regulation. First motion.
No move.
Rita Swope. Second?
Sir.
Second, Mayor Gaddis. Rita Swope.
I'll go ahead and defer to the city manager.
Then Reeves.
Mayor and council, this is just another changes that the planning board did recommend, and we reviewed those probably four months ago roughly, and we're just bringing the updated ordinances to you a couple of times.
I have a question for you, Mr. City Manager. At first I thought we changed this, because I had a question when we had it in work session. But then I went back and looked at the code, and it actually says this. So I'm gonna read it. It's only one sentence. Oh, it's two sentences. We'll put it in context, and then you can tell me what's meant by it. Because I, this is existing now, and then the new one will incorporate that. So 10-35 sanitary facilities, yes, it's glamorous being mayor of Bella Beach. We're talking about sanitary facilities. A portable sanitary facility shall be supplied to a new construction site within the city after the initial grading has been completed and before the foundation work has begun. We're cool. Such portable sanitary facility shall be maintained at the site in an inconspicuous location, to be specified in the site plan until after the hookup of interior sanitary facilities. So my question is, since I've built my own house and seen plenty of others being built, typically, they are not able to place them any further than curbside. So what exactly is an inconspicuous location? And is every house that's ever been built here in violation of this ordinance? Because I really don't want to revise it and still have it baked.
Well, what was brought up about this by the code review board was the fact that porta-potties sometimes aren't set back in the lot a little bit. They end up in the curb, they end up in the roadway. So that's what the code, or the code review committee was trying to change a little bit, to try to get the contractors to maybe put some shielding in front of them, or, you know, as an example, if you use a house that's being built on, built in the yard, they have a fence around it, so their porta-potty is probably inside. But that's what the concept was, the code.
And that's what I thought. And then we run into problems with having fencing in your front yard, which is also illegal, and I mean...
Not during construction. You can have a fence.
It's a fence.
You can have a fence, just like on built-in yard. If somebody wants to...
I guess, here's my point. If we want to fence it, then let's say we want it fenced. I don't care my house is built. It really doesn't matter to me. I think it's ridiculous, because quite frankly, it's hard enough for them to pump the darn stuff out of this without having more hazards to go around. But if it's so important that we have a fence around it, then make the person build a fence. It's a small expense to pay when you're building a house. With that said, I have no idea what inconspicuous meant. I think if I polled 10 people, we'd get 10 different things. It's really hard when you've cleared up a lot to have anything inconspicuous. It's a flat lot of sand, and they can't really put it in the back because they won't go off-road with their heavy trucks. And then they gotta pump the stuff out, and they don't want to go in the back and pump it out. So all I'm saying is, as long as we're revising this now, can we make it to something that people could understand? And if we want fencing, then say fencing. And if we want it to, if we want people to use their best effort to make it inconspicuous, then say that. But this, the way I read this right now, I wouldn't know what to do. And I tell you, the porta-john guy just dropped it in your front yard, so...
I mean, we're just using the words that they wanted it shielded. That's what they really wanted. And this came directly from the planning board report.
Let's say that. And how would we like it shielded? A fence, gold bars? I mean, what would we like?
I think this is giving the contractor the flexibility to work with his surroundings, and I see no reason at all to make it very specific. I think it's plain as day, inconspicuous or shielded location. Don't make it such a big eyesore, you know?
Well, as an attorney?
Of course.
Of course. Yes, see, when we're passing law, folks, people up here don't want to deal with an attorney, but you will down the road anyway, okay? So as an attorney, you read it for void, for vagueness. Yoli Roderro is nodding her head. She's also an attorney and a professor at that. So this is vague. I don't know what inconspicuous means. It means something to Lynn Reeves, and it means something to Lori, and it means something to the Cog God. And if he has 10 people, so if you want it shielded, say you want it shielded. That's simple. Inconspicuous, it means something to everybody. Inconspicuous to me may mean, like what Lynn just said, I don't want it dropped in the curb. You know, hard to disagree with that, okay? But inconspicuous, I gotta hide it behind a tree in my backyard, and now my neighbor's gonna smell it, eh, you know what? Leave it at the front curb. It's only a couple of months. I got pictures of people in this room who built houses, had their porta-john right at the front. We did it too. That's where they dropped them. So I don't know, you know, we have a 25-foot setback, and you can't have anything in it. So I don't know how you make it inconspicuous unless you happen to have some palm trees that are small. I don't know how you're gonna do that. If you want it shielded, just say you want it shielded. That's simple.
Shielding it is an option according to this. Inconspicuous or shielded.
Okay, but I don't know what inconspicuous, I just don't understand what inconspicuous means. I don't, sorry.
So shielded.
Has it been an issue?
We're changing it.
Has it been an issue with what?
Well, I mean, the wording inconspicuous has been in the ordinance.
We've had a few complaints about porta-potties. Most recently on 15th Street, probably the most.
I know that.
So, you know, and I understand to some degree, but porta-potties are part of construction. That's the life of construction. It's not like you have a restroom.
Not an outhouse, is what you're saying. Yeah, I agree.
So in other words, a construction site is a construction site, and let's deal with it by exception rather than start redoing all the codes to misstand the screwing in the support of porta-potties.
You're redoing the code now, Mr. Gunn. That's what we're doing. This is a motion to redo the code. So if we're gonna redo it, do it right, instead of doing it wrong. I don't know. That's just a legal thought. Make your laws right, not wrong.
I probably use the porta-john more than anybody in this room. So the fact, the fact here is, we only have about a 15-foot honey dipper hose. You put it too far away, you can't clean it out, all right? Then you really get dispelled. I mean, you think red tide's bad? All right, so it should be as close to an area where the truck can pull up. And the other thing, I have a big problem is the second page here. 6:00 PM to 7:00 AM, a few things.
Frank? They can't hear you.
I'm sorry.
There you go.
I gotta learn how to use this.
Not that hard.
6:00 PM to 7:00 AM, a lot of people have told me they would like that 7:00 AM to move to 8:00 AM, okay? Especially on the weekends. In the construction business, if it says 7:00 AM, you get guys pulling up at 6:30 in the morning, yakking, drinking coffee, out in front of the construction site. It's a lot better to have them yakking at 7:30.
Frank, I'll agree with you, and it's not just the yakking. They back up, they've got the water mag beepers on the back, when they're beeping, coming down the block. You hear it, you know, and not everybody gets up. Some people, I see a person here who works evenings and is sleeping at that time of the day, so, you know, definitely not something that's desirable here. We could move it an hour.
Just to clarify, all that was added to this was inconspicuous was evidently already there, or shielded.
I said that, yeah. I said that. I just didn't know what inconspicuous meant. Anyway, Mr. Van Gort's point, he's talking about hours. He has a problem with the hours.
The hours on Saturdays, is that what you said? I have a problem with, don't put me through here. I have a problem with 7:00 AM, anytime, especially on Saturdays. I think it should be 8:00 AM across the board, 8 to 6.
An hour, Dan.
I'll disagree with that, and the reason why is because at 8:00 AM, many people in our neighborhood is going to work. You've got big trucks, heavy machinery. Hopefully, they're all moved in by 8:00 o'clock. Otherwise, you're gonna be fighting with them to get out as they're trying to get in. So I'm okay with Saturday.
Well, you're only gonna fight with them on the initial day that they start up, and most contractors will drop their equipment off the night before end, so. Plus, the backup alarms and everything like that, as the mayor says, they go off.
Counsel, any other comments? Can I then call the question? Nope, can't do that. But I'll run the meeting, but thank you. Citizens? Mr. Hanzick? See, had I followed Mr. Gunn, I would've been breaking the law. I don't want to break the law.
That's why we pay you the big bucks.
I do get the big bucks, and thank you. I appreciate the bonus, too.
John Hanzick, 22nd Street. I can appreciate what the committee tried to do, but let's face the reality. Porta-potties are part of construction, and like was mentioned momentarily, you put that thing too far off of the street, and they can't pump it out. It ain't broke, don't fix it. Speaking about the time, though, I have something that maybe the city needs to take a look at, and I know this from personal experience. So years ago, after we bought our house, we were over here for a weekend working on it. And unfortunately, the transformer, right there on our property, blew in August. Notified Duke. Best they could do is get somebody out there, you know, next morning, this was Saturday night, they showed up Sunday morning, they started working before 7:00. Some schmuck, and I mean some schmuck on 23rd, called the sheriff. On 23rd, on the other side, the north side, they had power. So we had to wait till after 8:00. There needs to be an exception in our code, if you will, for emergencies. And I've been got something else, okay, for simple reasons, and it's obvious. I have a diagnosis that requires me to use oxygen at night. That machine goes down, I can still breathe, okay? Don't get me wrong. But if it's for an extended period of time, I might be SOL. So you need to do something with the code for emergency use. I mean, it doesn't get, Dukas are gonna make exceptions, but there are other people who have medical conditions that need that power 24/7. But back to this thing, it ain't broke, don't fix it.
Mr. Hanzick, just as a piece of information, the way the rule is written, it does say, you know, it gives the hours, 6 to 7, weekends, except for holidays. And then it says, except in case of urgent necessity to protect public health and safety, and then only with authorization from the city manager or his or her designate. So, yeah, by then it still will be 7:00, and you still won't have power. So, you know, again, the city manager, and I will speak in his defense, is usually available at pretty crazy hours sometimes, and I've seen him work on the weekends, doing certain things, particularly with short-term rental, but, you know, is he available every morning at 7:00, or on a Sunday, or a Saturday? I mean, I don't know. I doubt it. I doubt any of us would be on it every day, so, nor is it required. So maybe that's a problem. Maybe this thing isn't ready for, you know, prime time. I mean, if we're gonna look at these ordinances, like I said, you know, let's make them right, get them right. We're not gonna revise them again, hopefully, anytime soon. But thank you. Just, I want to let you know, there was an emergency thing, but you gotta go to Congress to get an authorization.
I think, like I said, I think it was early on, you know, coming over on weekends, and it just happened to be within a couple of months of purchasing the house. But like you said, and we didn't know at the time, you had to go through the city manager, tell the power company, or tell the deputy, it's okay, which still doesn't make a whole lot of sense. But thank you, sir.
But thank you. Other citizens' comments? Come back to council? No final comments?
Blank.
I believe the protocol has been met. Call the question, please.
Yeah. You have to get an effort to call the question. It actually has to be voted on, Mr. Gunn. I was ready to do that anyway, because nobody made any comments. But if you'd like, go through the protocol to call the question. You shouldn't want to do this. Because I was gonna do it anyway. Nobody was making any comments. You have to draw it. You withdraw it.
You have to be the expert.
If you call the question, I need to get a second, we need to have a majority, I think it's debatable, I have to check my cheat sheet, or we can just say nothing.
Call the question, please.
Perfect. Rita Swope calls decides on that. Rita, you have the last word.
Call the question.
Certainly. Ordinance 21-06, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Bella Beach, Florida, providing for amendments to section 10-2, 10-32B1, 10-32B4, 10-35, 10-37, 10-38A2, 10-7414, and to 10-777 of the city code ordinances, providing for incorporation of recitals, providing for approval of amendments to section 10-2, 10-32B1, 10-32B4, 10-35, 10-37, 10-38A2, 10-7414, and 10-777 of the city code ordinances, providing for a copy to be kept on file, providing for severability, providing for the repeal of all ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing for an effective date. Madam Clerk, this is reading one, right?
Yes.
Reading one, okay. So we'll call the roll, please.
Councilmember Gunn.
Aye.
Councilmember Notaro.
Aye.
Councilmember Swope.
Aye.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gaddis.
Aye.
Mayor Manta.
No. So it passes 4 to 2. First reading, madam clerk will advertise it, and then we'll bring it back for a second reading and final reading in September. Unfinished business, do we have any? There is none. City Attorney, Fred Riley. It is your time.
I would ask the city council to give me the flexibility to propose a way forward, and let me explain it fully. I've been sitting here thinking very diligently about what would be the most appropriate thing, so with your authority, I'll explain what I think you should do.
This is your time as city manager. This is your time as city manager, as city attorney, we don't even need to give permission. Does anybody have any objections? You have the floor.
Okay, I'll say several things that are factually based. This evening, three of the council members asked me to reconsider. Three of the council members voted in favor of, and those three that asked me to reconsider did not vote for going forward with the RFP process. So three of you did, so it obviously is a standoff. The councilwoman, Robinaki, is not here, and I think it would be inappropriate for me to guess what she, her view on this would be. And I'm not going to project what her view may be. But, as I said earlier, the difficult thing for the city council is you'll have to discuss things in public. So as we've seen tonight, that is a messy process at times. The thing that I will suggest to you is the best way forward is to do two things. One is to, normally at mid-month, you have your work session, and to have a special meeting where you consider whether you want to go forward with the RFP process. And if that special meeting, in an ideal world, all seven of the council members would be here, and you'd either, one way or another, would decide to go with that or not. So I again stress that I have been a lawyer a long time, I've parted ways with clients, and I am going to be professional about what I do, and that's not going to stop. I may not like some things, but I'm going to be professional about it. Having said that, the reason that I picked, or August 19th, was that was 30 days. My contract required me to give you 30 days' notice. If y'all had decided to go ahead tonight with the RFP process, then you have a pretty defined timeline as to when you would be able to bring somebody new on, okay? Without being able to go forward with the RFP, you don't have a defined timeline. So the second part of my proposal is that I will move the resignation date to the day after your first meeting in September. And that way, you have an attorney available to get you to the Tuesday, or the first meeting in September is September 6th, so I'm sure that's the holiday. Okay, so September 8th, I would suggest I move the date to September 9th, and at the workshop, if y'all decide to go forward with the RFP process, then, you know, I don't know what I'll decide, although I probably do know. But that, to me, is fair. It gives you all the ability to have an attorney, and the last thing I want to do for any client or is lead them high and dry and not able to do things in the interim. So that's my proposal, two things. One, schedule your workshop, and, but also schedule a special meeting to address the RFP issue, because you have to do something. And also, I will, if y'all agree to this, then tomorrow I'll send an email following up and changing my resignation date to September 9th, and that way, everything's covered. I think that's a very realistic and reasonable proposal.
It's more than fair, it's more than fair, given what's happened here. You didn't have to do that.
Well, I left one thing out. This is an easy yes or no type of decision, and it does, really shouldn't require any great debate. To me, it's a very fair thing, and it does what really should be done. I mean, there's two attorneys on the council, and the two attorneys know as well as I do, you have, as a Florida attorney, you have an obligation to do what's in the best interest of your client, and you're obligated to put that ahead of even your own interest. And that's what I'm trying to do.
Mr. Reeves, when is our, we haven't scheduled it yet for a work session, what were you thinking, the 16th of August?
It's the 16th. Yeah, we discussed that, we're gonna do the sign ordinance that night. And there'll be some comments about the budget, a little bit, not a whole lot, because we've pretty much been through it. We will have the, well, that'll be something, I'll speak about it by turn.
I want to poll for availability over here. Reed Swope, are you available on the 16th? Coming right down, all right, I'm just gonna come right back to you. Leslie Notaro? David?
Yes.
I am. Glenn? Frank Banker?
I can make myself available. I don't agree with any of this, I think this, I appreciate him giving us till September. I don't know if I would be that kind-hearted. I think we should have an emergency council meeting this week, with Robyn's in town, I don't know where she is. But I mean, if the majority of council wants us to go without a city attorney and put this whole city at risk, let me answer that at the ballot box.
I'm with you, I can call it for any night we want, I have that authority, that's why I was calling to make sure we get, I really want seven council members here, and then you own your vote. I'm with you, I want people to own that vote. But I don't want, Mr. Riley has given us a, he didn't have to do this, really, thank you. But we owe him a yes, no, and quite frankly, if we don't, if he doesn't have that support, then we need to get Mr. Reeves moving on this thing. You can't put him behind the eight ball either, he do need, at that point, to get a city attorney. So we have to have a city attorney tomorrow or later, I'll call a city meeting for tomorrow, but Robinaki is not here, she's a vital part of this. I know you don't want to speculate, but she was one of the people who voted against putting this RFP out. So, you know, Fox News Network can project that she might be on your side, and I want to make sure all seven people are here and have a voice. And I also want to make sure the citizens have a chance to have their voices heard. So I'll pick any night you want, I'm pretty much available this entire month, with the exception of a time then at the Lika City's convention. Other than that, I can't do anything, so.
Do I get an opportunity? August 16th works for me as before the whole resignation that goes into effect, and so I don't know why that would be a big concern to wait till that night. And Lynn, just real quick, if I can ask you a question, the Florida Lika Cities would supply an attorney if it came down to that, is that correct?
Knowing what Fred had submitted, I've already contacted three firms, and I have proposals from them to fill in as interns to the attorneys till the RFP is done, which typically was what would happen if the attorney left before the RFP.
Frank, I'd like to move it quicker, but I think the 16th, we seem to have consensus. Does anyone know if Robinaki is available that night? Can anyone find out, besides one of the council people, even though that's not a sunshine law?
Mayor?
Yes.
I can contact.
Can you?
Yeah, I don't know how quickly I could answer, but yes.
Okay, so here's what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna use my authority, the 16th before, we're gonna have a work session, 16th at 6 o'clock, is that one of those budget ones that's on a weird time?
No, 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 we do the special meeting first.
Okay, so special meeting will be 6 o'clock on the 16th right now. I, if, again, I want perfect attendance that night, or else we'll be right back where we are now and have accomplished nothing, and we'll follow it up with the work session, okay? So that's an authorized meeting at this point. And if you find out differently, then Patty, if you will poll the council, it's not a sunshine violation to ask other council members, but I'd rather no council member have to contact another council member, okay? It's just simply, are you available or are you not for whatever day? 16th is a good day, it looks like, okay? Mr. Riley, are you available that day?
16th?
Yes. Yes, I am. Okay, I'd like you to be here. A guest in honor. And the kid is still crying, because you, all right, anything else, Mr. Riley? Okay, thank you. City Manager?
At the last meeting, you asked me to verify the contract cancellation for ESG. I did that, in our contract, it says seven days' notice. Fred and I reviewed it, and I've already sent the letter notice out, and actually today I got the card back that they received. So we're good moving forward with that. The generator pricing, we're waiting on that, and we'll discuss that at the work session. And the sign ordinance. And that's, other things you have, you have the code report, things of that nature, but that's all I have.
And I alluded to it before, we did get a letter from the Florida Department of EPA, because I know there was a lot of citizen concern about what happened out in November out at the dunes. That's not gonna happen anymore. They've been very clear about what the rules are, and the city manager now has this information. I hope it will get integrated somehow into our procedure or regulations book, I don't think we need to make an ordinance out of this, but I think at least, you know, you would have it in regulations so that if, you know, you're out on a vacation or something, the DPW people and everybody else will know what the procedure is. And that procedure is a simple one. It can only be done in the winter months, the seedlings have to drop off the keoats, and you can't cut them lower than 18 inches. And you have to leave, this was interesting, I learned this, you have to leave the clippings there.
That's right.
So if we're doing that to clean the junk out, that maybe isn't the best thing, because we're gonna leave the junk there, so.
No, you pick the junk out.
Right, then you have different junk, you're gonna have keo.
But the keo stay there, because it's like a fertilizer junk.
So that's it, okay? There is something else, Mr. Reeves, you know what this is, and I'm not gonna bring it out in public session, you and I had a meeting on this, and we were gonna meet with Mr. Riley. You know what I'm talking about, right?
Our conversation on a week ago?
On the what? Yeah, about two weeks ago, right? So just keeping it on the radar, that is something we should follow up on, okay?
I'll see when Fred's.
No rush, but, well, September, a little bit of a rush.
Oh, I mean, you know, at the daytime, at least until 9 o'clock.
Yeah, it can be, I'm not good at that. I think you do a telephone call too, it doesn't matter. I mean, just to see, it's more just to decide where to begin, I mean, there was a lot of issues with that, that's a ball wax there, and before we bring it up to the citizens, and let's see where we're at with issues on this. Okay? City Clerk? Nothing. City Council comments? We'll start with Frank Banker.
Just what I spoke about earlier today, about the FWC and the Boeys, I guess I'll contact you, City Manager, and Mr. Riley. There is no official form to put a variance together, but she says it has to comply with a statute that doesn't exist. So I'll email you tomorrow morning.
Anything else? Okay, Glenn Dunn?
No.
Reed Swope?
Nothing.
Did you guess?
Uh, no.
I have nothing else. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Totally.
And we have a second, and all in favor? Aye, I don't oppose. Good night, everyone, 8:22, we're off.